Members has ready the appointed time and our formal call. I'm going to order the third session of the Special FC. This session, number seven, is from 2:00 PM to 3:30. So please take your seats according to our ordinary FC seating plan. The Special FC is convened to scrutinize the draft estimates for 2015-16 to ensure that the funding allocated will not be more than necessary for implementing the relevant policies. Depending on the number of members I will allocate, the speaking time for each member. Well, members would like to speak, please press the Request to Speak button. May I remind members that all questions must be directly related to the draft estimates. If members would like to ask our questions on the administration's written replies, please refer to the reply serial number at the top right-hand corner of the replies such as FSTBFS001. And our staff will project the relevant number onto the screen and please use the PC installed on our bench to gain access to the written replies. If you don't have enough time, you are encouraged to submit supplementary questions or follow up at the relevant panel. For this session, we have the SECED to answer questions on commerce, industry, and tourism. As for communications and technology, it will be dealt with at the next session. Introduction remarks, please, SECED. Thank you, Chairman. I know that you've all got my speaking notes, so I will just highlight the important points. In terms of ZIBA, a new agreement was signed under the framework of ZIBA between the SAR and the Ministry of Commerce in December last year to achieve early basic liberalization of trade services between Guangdong and Hong Kong. And the government will continue to achieve basic liberalization of trade and services in the mainland for Hong Kong by the end of this year. Regarding the Hong Kong ASEAN Free Trade Agreement, we hope that negotiations can be completed next year. Support for SMEs, we have provided multi-fold support for SMEs. In March this year, we've extended the application period of the time-limited special concessionary measures launched by the Hong Kong Mortgage Corporation Limited until the end of 2016. And we propose to inject $1.5 billion into the SME export marketing and development funds and to expand the scope of the SME export marketing fund and increase the amount of funding support for each project under the SME Development Fund from $2 million to $5 million. As for promoting the sustained development of the fashion industry, as members may be aware, we have set up the Expert Group on Fashion Industry. And the FS has expressed his support in the budget and will consolidate existing resources and invest new resources totaling $500 million to launch measures in the next three years. As for tourism, we received 60.8 million visitors in total last year, representing a year-on-year growth of 12%. However, because of the Occupy movement and a series of anti-parallel trading protests in recent months, the desired visitors to travel to Hong Kong have been adversely affected. We have some measures to tackle this. First, we'll continue to discuss with the central authorities on arrangements involving IVS. We will also allocate $18 million for the Hong Kong Tourism Board to set up its promotion efforts in the coming year. The budget has asked my bureau to lead the studies on introducing food trucks to Hong Kong. On tourism facilities, the Ocean Park is pressing ahead with the development of all-weather water park in Taishuan and its first hotel. And Hong Kong Disneyland will also launch a new Ironman-themed area by the end of 2016 and complete a new 750-room hotel in early 2027. We're now discussing with Hong Kong Disneyland Resort the Phase II development. It will take up about 60 hectares with hotel development and retail facilities. To attract more high-value added visitors, we will endeavor to release the first site within the hotel belt of the Kai-Tak runway precinct to the market by the end of this year. And we also consider possible means to gradually release the remaining sites within the hotel belt in future for development into a distinctive hotel cluster. Regarding the total number of hotel rooms, currently we have 72,700 and it will increase to 84,000 in end 2017. The number of shipyards at our Kai-Tak Cruise Terminal is rising steadily. And the number of shipyards for this year will be more than double that of last year. And its patronage throughput will therefore increase. We are committed to developing tourism, cruise tourism in Hong Kong, and we will cooperate with neighboring ports to enhance the attractiveness of the whole region to cruise companies. Regarding shopping facility in border area, we believe it is a worthwhile concept because the proposed development involves statutory planning and land administration procedures. The discussion between the project proponent and the relevant government departments has been receiving advice from us. And as for intellectual property, the Working Group on IP Trading has completed its work and it announced its report last week. We're going to reserve $23 million in coming three years for implementing a series of new measures. And as for the Bill on Copyright Amendment between 2016, the Bills Committee is in operation. And the government is working to implement the original grants patent system. Our target is to introduce the OPG system in 2016-17, the earliest. Competition policy, the Competition Commission just announced the revised guidelines. When the relevant work is completed, we will announce the full commencement of the ordinance. Thank you. We'll end at 3:30 and 13 members have registered to speak. Xin Chongkai, Wong Kwok Heng, Lo Wei Kwok, Martin Liu, Frankie Yik, Michael Ten, Chau Wen Ling, Charles Mok Chung, Kwok Pan, Pun Si Wah, James Stanton, Kwok, Wong Ting Kwong, Chan Kam Lam, Antalina Wong. Mr. Xin Chongkai. CEDB 143. About the number of multi-entry endorsements granted. And we're told that there were close to 15 million visitors, accounting for about one-quarter of the total visitors to Hong Kong in 2014, or about 23 to 24%. In 2005, it started with 1.4 million. So the figure rose by tenfold in just a few years. These are visitors regarded as those who come to buy daily necessities in Hong Kong. I do ask the Secretary, what measures does he have? We just had a motion debate last week and the government appeared to be rather helpless. Can we lower the visitors, the number of visitors from this category so that we can have more space, more room for other visitors? And as for border shopping area, in last week's debate, this concept received least objection. But according to a reply, there is only one in the pipeline and it's also a private initiative. Sorry to ask you, now, I cannot find this in the draft estimates. So I want to know whether, given that our border is so long, some asked whether Chongqing Street can be open to serve as a border shopping area. So you don't have to tell me anything about Lot Ma Chao, it can be found in reply. I'd like to know border shopping malls in the pipeline other than the Lot Ma Chao one. If yes, the provisions, please. Regarding the number of visitors, we've already reflected the community's views and analysis to the central authorities. And according to news reports, the central authorities acknowledged our report from the government. And as for border shopping mall, as you know, we have one planned for Lot Ma Chao. And when we develop the northern part of NT, we'll reserve a shopping area for such facilities. But it is urgent for us to divert such visitors to elsewhere, to border shopping mall, for instance. So anyone from the private sector with such a proposal will get the necessary support from us, including advice from governments, departments, and other things. So you're waiting for the private sector to initiate such projects? You have no intention to plan for a second or third border shopping mall? Secretary?
Well, if the security. Yes, we do plan for shopping facilities. But then, because we have quite a substantial of shoppers who are mainly visitors, and I would like to provide the necessary support for any private initiatives so that it can be implemented as early as possible. Mr. Wong Kwok Heng, I'd like to ask a question in relation to the Secretary's speech, OPG system. I want to thank Mr. Gregory So again. It's an important achievement by him. And you say that the system can be introduced the earliest in 2016-17. Can you tell us when the relevant paper can be submitted to the legislature for scrutiny? Because if we can have it earlier, we can have it passed earlier. As you know, the trend in council is a billy-bustering and we don't know when a paper can be passed. So can other relevant papers be submitted to the council ASAP? And secondly, our tourism and retail industries have been hit by the Occupy movement. And anti-parallel trading activities has also aggravated the problem. So you're going to allocate $18 million for the Hong Kong Tourism Board to step up its promotional efforts? I think the urgent task for us is to improve Hong Kong's image. Can we just rely on Hong Kong TB to do it? And as for the introduction of food trucks, will you deal with it by interdepartmental efforts? Secretary, I thank Mr. Wong for his support for the retail industry, for the OPG system. As I said, our aim is to launch the system in early 16-17. Now we are drafting the relevant legislation. And we will keep in touch with all stakeholders. Mr. Wong can rest assured, we will do it as soon as possible and we'll do our level best. Because preparation work is considerable and the work such as examination must be done properly. Otherwise, it will be counterproductive. As for tourism, we need multifaceted promotion. We have allocated an additional $18 million for Hong Kong TB to market Hong Kong. And when government officials visit other places, as well as ETO offices would let other countries know the latest developments in Hong Kong so that other visitors will find Hong Kong attractive as a tourism destination. What was your third question? Food trucks. Food trucks. We have a few departments, including AVHD and colleagues from FH Food and Health Bureau, working together. Now, we are now studying how food trucks operate in places such as the US and Southeast Asia, and also the government's role in developing food trucks. We hope to introduce food trucks into Hong Kong as soon as possible, whether it be under our current legal framework or by means of legislative amendments. We are now studying the ECU, we hope to do it as soon as possible.
I hope that the Secretary will note that the food trucks should not be monopolized by the consortia. Dr. Lo Wei Kwok. May I refer you to Reply 116 in relation to the BUT Fund, Dedicated Fund on Branding, Upgrading, and Domestic Sales at $1 billion. The reply carries quite many details. I'm not just following up on the reply. I'd like to ask a more elaborative answer. There was this survey on the PRD as well as Hong Kong's outlets in future. Since the financial tsunami in 2008, factory establishments in the PRD region by Hong Kong's manufacturers has been on a decline. The number of Guangdong enterprises dropped by 40% according to the statistics collected by the survey. That's quite a blow to us because since the global financial tsunami in 2008, the global market has been changing. The European-American markets have been dwindling and costs on the mainland have been rising. Many Hong Kong manufacturers focus their businesses in the PRD region. So that's quite a blow to us. Secretary, do you master this situation? Will you enhance your effort in assisting our manufacturers? Secretary? Thank you, Dr. Lo, for your question. I think you've hit the nail on his head. In the past, our manufacturers adopted the OEM approach, et cetera. At that time, the economy developed very rapidly. Given the value-added trend, we really have to upgrade and transform our enterprises in terms of design, science, and technology. We should catch up with the world standard. In the past, our enterprises have been very successful in the use of the BUT Fund. Some of money have been spent on branding, upgrading, and domestic sales. We have no other choices. We have to work on science and technology, branding, and upgrading before we can be forerunners in the world. Explore with the trades and industries to see what government initiatives would be helpful. We'll consider them. Dr. Lo Wei Kwok? Of course. To assist Hong Kong's manufacturers in terms of branding, upgrading, and domestic sales must be done by the government. To upgrade our products in the market, publicity and promotion are important. Phase four of the Science Park is now earmarked for medium-density domestic flats. So Secretary, what good solutions do you have such that we can have more investment in terms of land supply? Well, the Science Park would be helpful to upgrade our industries. In a moment, in the next session, maybe we can have more specific answers on land supply and science and technology. I have to declare that I'm a director of the Science Park, but I have no financial or fiscal interest involved. I'd like to follow up on Reply 227. It said in that letter that we should, we should, well, it's not very, that answer is about the appropriateness of internship in ASEAN countries. Last year, there were 90 places, this year 250 places. But only seven UGC-funded institutions are covered. What about the self-financed bachelor degree students? Are there not enough places or are there other reasons? Well, maybe you should ask your questions one by one. Secretary? The ETO in Singapore started this last year. If internship opportunities could be arranged, that office would make arrangements. So this year, we propose a bigger sum of money to allow more university students to go. We focus on the eight UGC-funded universities. We do not rule out further opportunities in future. We can expand this scheme to other institutions. Mr. Martin Liu? Well, I'm on the same reply. My question was 334. In relation to the number of jurisdictions and the inclination of our students and the distribution in the ASEAN countries. But the Secretary's reply was rather general. Can I have a chart to list out the number of posts in each jurisdiction? And any special meaning behind the distribution of places? Most places from which jurisdiction and why? Is it dependent on how many places can be offered by that particular jurisdiction? Secretary, do you have the information in hand? No, but I can provide a supplementary reply. Now, I'd like to follow up on Reply 295. Starting from the year 2010-2011, the amount of money for market promotion had been dropping. May I have an explanation from the bureau? I understand that this SME fund was fully expanded. In the next three years, how many applications, successful rate, and the average sum of subvention? Who answer this? TID. In the past five years, the number of applications for this EMF, SME Export Market Fund, has been dropping. According to our analysis, the reasons are as follows. Well, this is for external marketing, that is export marketing. In the past few years, the external markets were not that stable. The prospect was not that certain. So the SMEs reduced their effort in export marketing. Number two, we note that as science and technology advance and with the internet improvements, they've resorted more to online publicity and marketing and participated less in exhibitions. Why do we say so? Because a major part of the fund is as SMEs can place advertisements. Well, you can give us these details in your supplementary reply. Mr. Frankie Yik. In Reply 200, a consultancy study carried out by the government on one-stop clearance was conducted. But it seems that you're focusing on local operations. But the sector is very concerned about the one-belt-one-road proposal. So they would like to have an electronic platform for a one-stop clearance operation such that in future, trade transactions can be done through this platform, bring more business opportunities to Hong Kong. Secretary, will you expedite your pace in this regard? Because in the reply, you say that your consultancy will take care of that, but that would only be completed in 2015-16. Can you expedite that? Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for the question. For this consultancy study on a single-window operation is still underway. Progress has been made. The Honorable Member asked whether we would consider Hong Kong's platform as well as similar platforms in other jurisdictions. We're willing to take that on board and include that in our study. Mr. Frankie Yik, I would like you to do that as quickly as possible. The business sector does not have the capacity to do so. Among governments, there must be collaborative effort in this clearance operation. So we'll look into the details. And then I'd like to ask about Reply 241. Only 25 countries are covered and only a few countries have signed agreements with us. But for USA and the EU, our most important trade partners, when will you sign agreements with them? Because we cannot have 100% X-ray check at our airport. Customs and Axise? Thank you. As Mr. Frankie Yik said, after the implementation of this Authorized Economic Operator Program, AEO program, we already got 25 enterprises participating and over 50 have applied. We'll see a market increase very soon. Well, we have a number of tasks to do. Education and publicity must be done. Mr. Frankie Yik, understand that with some institutions and trade associations, we've been working on this. We would like to assist enterprises to attain the standards so that they can effectively attain the standards and apply. Besides, we already negotiated with some jurisdictions. We'll try to sign with as many jurisdictions as possible that will boost their attractiveness. With Thailand and Malaysia, agreements will be signed within this year. We've contacted EU, but some technical issues have to be resolved. Should we do it by way of a legal document? We're discussing, but the major partners are our objectives. Please act quickly because the US and EU are major partners. I'd like to ask about Reply 164 and 165. 31 million visitors for IVS in the past years. And then, half of them from Shan Zhan, over 10 million. Some of them spent overnight stay for multi-entry visitors, only $30 billion. Now, the IVS has exerted pressure on Hong Kong and led to other problems. And some other visitors found Hong Kong not so attractive. For multi-entry visitors, they've been rising. If the government folds its hands without doing anything, I believe more visitors will come under multi-visas or multi-entries. The number of such visitors may reach 30 million, while the other visitors...
while the other visitors may drop to ten million only. For one city with multi-entries, we got seventy percent. So in the long run, the positioning of our tourism will not be that we become a tourism capital in the world. We'll become the target of Shenzhen only. For Tsim Muen, Sha Tin, and Yunnan Long, they will become part of their living circle. Their 1.65 million population of the three new towns will grow to maybe four million. In March, we recorded the most serious problem. The overall spending under IVS dropped by thirty percent because less visitors are coming under that scheme.
There has been no increase in cities under IVS since twenty oh seven. So I'd like to ask, when can we have something done about the multi-entry endorsement? And when our retail industry declines, leading to many job... Or many unemployment, many unemployed, who will be held accountable? You or the CE? Because the multi-entry endorsement policy involves immigration policy of the mainland. So the CE is discussing with the central authorities as to how adjustment can be made. Will we, do we have to wait much longer? And as you said, this has affected our retail industry and also employment opportunities. So we must balance all factors very carefully. I'm sure the CE or the central authorities has heard views from members of the council and also the community. The question is, when can we have a cap on the number of entries under the multi-, multiple-entry endorsement? Whether there will be a cap on the number of visits under the multi-entry endorsements? If yes, when? Regarding improving our tourism structure, there are various options. So you don't even have the courage to answer my question. Mr. Tian has not heard my reply carefully. Your time is up, Dr. Jiang Lai-wan. Thank you. I'd like to ask a follow-up question on our tourism industry. In Hong Kong, tourism and financial services are two important industries of Hong Kong. Tourism, the tourism industry is directly or indirectly supporting over a million people in Hong Kong. We have seen an increasing trend in visitors. And as for overnight visitors, it's been rising, but in February, in January, it was a bit lower. So it's good that we have some industries. So we have IVS and we also have parallel traders. Shoppers only come to Hong Kong at weekends to shop and eat here. It's just like Hong Kong people are going to Law Wook and Fuchien for shopping and for eating. Parallel traders, well, we don't have too many of them. But they... But because of the anti-parallel trading activities protest, we, our reputation as hospitable city has been tarnished. In particular, those protesters who kicked suspected parallel traders. The mainland, our... This is spreading fast on the mainland. This is regrettable. We have done a lot to promote Hong Kong and the behavior of a bunch of people in Hong Kong have seriously affected our image. I know you are giving money to Hong Kong TB to promote us. Will you consider savaging our image? And particularly, you have to tell the mainland, the mainlanders, it's not that they are not welcome here. Secretary? Yes, we've allocated extra funding to the Hong Kong TB to boost our image, both on the mainland and in other countries. Perhaps Mr. Lau can supplement? Mr. Liu?
Thank you. Thank you for your question. Our tourism industry is under great challenges. Last year, we had the Occupy movement and recently we've protested again parallel traders. I think this has tarnished our image as hospitable city. So on the mainland, we will launch a series of advertisements to boost our image as a city of hospitality. Of course, we will promote to the sector on the mainland. The Hong Kong is a city of hospitality and we continue to welcome visitors. As for short-haul markets in early January, Mr. Lam King Ng, chairman of the Hong Kong TB, led a delegation to seven different markets to hammer home that message to the stakeholders and industry there. Since you've got another eighty million dollars from the government, will you consider taking our advertisements on the media of the mainland to promote Hong Kong as a city of hospitality? Yes, in the eighty million dollars, we have taken out some budget to invite media, the media of some short-haul markets to come to see Hong Kong. Mr. Charles Mark?
Question number sixty-three. A question asked by Mr. Christopher John. I'd like to follow up on his behalf. Many SMEs told us that the SME Export Marketing Fund is very important to them because SMEs can apply for funding under it very conveniently for promoting their markets in Hong Kong as well as overseas. However, they said that after they have exceeded a certain ceiling of funding, perhaps it's one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the secretary can confirm this, they won't have any further funding. And they want this to be a recurrent funding support. While you are going to inject one hundred and fifty million dollars into the two SME support funds, can you relax the criteria a bit so that SMEs can have the chance to use the fund repeatedly? You can't say that it's not fair because some people may not need the fund, but some have a repeated need for it. And some SMEs are to say that there used to be a training fund. And nowadays, they want, while they want to provide training for the staff, it's not so convenient. And their staff will have to apply under the Continued Education Fund. In the past, there was an SME training fund. So can you reconsider? Can you consider launching that fund again? Thank you. This SME Export Marketing and Development Funds have adjusted its conditions minimally. For instance, the funding support for each project was two million is now increased. It's now increased. It used to be one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, now two hundred thousand dollars. The purpose of the SME Export Marketing Fund is to encourage SMEs to use it for promoting their export market. For instance, some of them may want to try exports, exporting to other markets, but they don't know whether it would be successful. So we give them a matching fund and they can take out advertisements. After they are successful, they've got a business and they can use their own resources to do it. There is no need for a government to support it long term. So this is the original intention of the fund, but it's set by the secretary. In the past, in the light of different circumstances, we have increased the funding ceiling. For instance, in twenty thirteen, we raised the ceiling from one hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred thousand dollars. There are only about one hundred and fifty SMEs that have spent up to the ceiling. There are forty thousand SMEs have benefited under the fund. In other words, less than one percent of the SMEs have spent up to this ceiling. What about training? Training? There used to be a training fund, but as you said, Mr. Mark.
Because now we have this CEF, Continuous Education Fund, we believe there are, there is another way to subsidize the training of employees. But as you said, the industry as well as the community have views on this and we're willing to reconsider.
Mr. Chung Kuo-pen? I thank Mr. Charles Mark for asking that supplementary question on my behalf. So I will save my breath and turn to another question. Question oh four seven, reply oh four seven. We want Hong Kong to be an IT training fund. And then a report was announced last week and you have earmarked twenty-three million dollars to do this. Now, twenty-three million dollars over three years, that means a little bit more than seven millions per year, not a lot. And in your reply, it said that in twenty one fifteen, Chief E O Post will be created and also supporting staff. I'd like to know whether it is included in the twenty-three millions earmarked for this work or not. Now, I'd like to know how SMEs can benefit, given that there are only seven million odd dollars per year. How much can be done? And also ASEAN, I know Burma, Myanmar, and Hong Kong have been talking about an agreement to protect foreign investors. Many Hong Kong manufacturers have set up their factories in Myanmar. So this agreement is very important. Secretary, I thank Mr. Chung Kuo-pen for his continuous support in this regard. Twenty-three million dollars, as I said in my reply, we have different plans to help SMEs to enhance awareness in IP. Because this is a new development, we have to spend public money carefully if necessary. We can also add more resources to stop our efforts. And I think twenty-three million dollars as a start is appropriate. As for employment of that chief, a year will be covered by this twenty-three million dollars. May I ask the commissioner to reply?
Well, the twenty-three million dollars will be for special projects such as promotion and manpower training. Regarding the salary amendment of that chief, a year post, it is not covered in this twenty-three million dollars.
Mr. Chung Kuo-pen, what about the agreement between Hong Kong and Myanmar?
When we discuss free trade agreements with ASEAN, we will discuss this agreement on protection of investment. So it will be discussed as a package.
Regarding our past efforts, can the director please supplement?
Regarding our agreement with Myanmar, we need the authorization of the central authorities. There are three copies in English and Chinese and language of Myanmar. And we have to seek central authorities' authorization, back and forth of documents six times, and we are trying to do it very quickly. But this has been going on for quite a while. Do you have any idea when it can be implemented? Because many Hong Kong manufacturers have set up their factories in Myanmar and therefore protection is also important.
Secretary, Director General? Well, very simple, we're trying our very best to launch this. But because of amendments to text... Well, as far as possible, that shouldn't be your answer. Well, it depends on the government of Myanmar. We have to receive their answer first. Well, Director General, you're too slow when you speak. Mr. Pun Siu-ping? Well, undeniably, tourism is a very important economic pillar. We're told just now that last year, we got sixty million odd tourists. In terms of accommodation, eating, et cetera, are we able to cope? Mr. Chang Chi-chun asked about the two theme parks, and that's in reply forty-seven. Well, the two theme parks will be completed in twenty sixteen seventeen. It's reply four, rather. We're now suffering from manpower shortage. What about cost? Is the government confident? And then in relation to Ocean Park and Disneyland, in five years, for visitors from local, mainland, and overseas jurisdictions, overseas twenty-five percent drop to twenty percent, local stable, mainland growing. For Ocean Park, we don't have the figures. Can we have the figures? For Disneyland, eighty million dollars for the Development Bureau to publicize Hong Kong. Will you do more on the developing jurisdictions? And how many overseas tourists came as a result? And then I'd also like to ask about reply five on the food truck. The secretary mentioned the food truck. He said that he would take reference from overseas jurisdictions. Any specific timetable? Because three bureaus are involved. If your study only targets the mainland, then locally, how should we make our attractions more characteristic of Hong Kong? And when will we see any result? Commissioner for Tourism? We know that Hong Kong's labor market is very tight at the moment. And very often during the construction period, a number of factors have to be controlled. For the two theme parks, they're trying their very best to control their expenses within the original budget. We've already asked them to head towards that goal. The second question is about the distribution of visitors for Ocean Park. By and large, the figures are more or less the same as those of Disneyland. So more mainland visitors and then less locals, still less overseas visitors. What about the Tourism Board? Well, the Board collaborates closely with the Ocean Park and Disneyland in promotion and publicity on the mainland and in Southeast Asia. For long-haul visitors, we've seen a slower growth in recent times. It's because of the economy in our long-haul markets. And apart from Taiwan, the Southeast Asian markets have seen more publicity and promotion efforts in the hope that more visitors will be brought in. As for the question on food truck, please provide a supplementary question. Mrs. Sin Chung Kai asked about the... Mrs. Shin Chung Kai asked about the multiple entry arrangements. That's reply one four three. I'm a former chairman of the Tourism Board and I'm now an elected councillor from NT East. For parallel trading, IVS as well as multiple entry arrangements, I would like to adopt a more comprehensive and fairer approach, as far as I can see it. Well, I don't think I need to dwell too much on the IVS. But what about the one odd million visitors from Shenzhen under the multiple entry arrangement? We didn't think about that. We thought Shenzhen was developing rapidly in terms of economy. We would like more of them to come. Maybe we thought they would only watch the horse races. But we cannot imagine that in recent times, they're so worried about fake goods. They came to Hong Kong continuously to shop and with more parallel trading. And we're now considering solutions in the new territories. We have to resolve this. The Liberal Party proposed to the CPG that we cap the number of visitors under the multiple entry arrangements, similar to the DEPs, so maybe around ten trips. So one point five billion averaging ten entries. We should consider that. At the same time, the number of cities under the IVS should increase in number. Otherwise, given the existing forty, well, Mr. Michael Ten was wrong. There's nothing like a s- a single entry per day, like in Shanghai, two trips in three months or four trips in six months. So there's nothing like uh one trip per day. I'd like to repeat Dr. Chung Lai Wan's question. As a businessman and the then chairman of the Tourism Board, it's easier said than done. Back then, we spent a great deal of money to publicize Hong Kong as a hospital city. And now many mainlanders are saying, why should I come to Hong Kong? And then the Shanghai needs don't want to be treated like Hong Kong- Hongkongers. Shanghai needs don't want to admit Hong Kong status. Dr. Chung Lai Wan's question is very good. What about the Southeast Asian countries? Maybe to them, Japan and Europe are cheaper, cheaper destinations. So not that many tourists come to Hong Kong. So we should redeploy the resources of the Tourism Board to take into consideration the forty cities under IVS or go to Harbin or Qingdao. We should rectify the impression. We're not against parallel, we're not against the IVS. We're combating excessive parallel trading. Secretary, we have to combat excessive parallel trading. We have to consider our own capacity. And then we have to consider IVS as a structure as well as the number of visitors coming under it. We should keep our impression as a hospi- a city of hospitality. That's the long-term solution and to boost the cost-effectiveness of the scheme. Before I go to the next councillor, I'd like to say that Mr. Yu Se Wing will be the last. I have to draw a line there, otherwise we'll exceed three thirty PM. Mr. Wong Ting Kwong, thank you, Chairman. In the speaking notes of the secretary, the boundary shopping mall is mentioned. I'd like to thank the secretary to coordinate and provide us with advices. Well, the government and the business sector have to collaborate closely before we want to see a very expeditious result. And then the FS mentioned the food truck concept. And this is also in the written reply. A number of departments will be involved. We discover that the food truck concept is also appropriate for the shopping mall at the boundary. So when will that be implemented? Do you have a timetable? Within several months? And which fees of legislation can establish the licensing regime for this? Secretary, for the timetable, it depends on the study results and whether or not we need any legislative amendments. In the past, we have expressed our views. If we need to amend the laws, as the chairman said over the radio, it will take more time. But even if we are not to amend our laws, we're still subject to certain constraints. We have to listen to the stakeholders. So we'll try to do that as far, as fast as possible. North America, Japan, Korea and Europe have experience in this regard. We'll try to learn from them. We have the Food and Health Bureau, Department of Health, Transport Department and relevant departments in relation to vehicular standards, mode of operation, food, health, food safety, et cetera. We've started a study on all those and that will take time. Anyway, we would like to launch that as soon as possible. Mr. Wong Ting Kwong? Well, it depends on your effort. Under the existing laws, are there any provisions to allow these food trucks to operate? We're worried that in future, when the lock my child facilities are completed, illegal food hawkers may be attracted there. Well, we saw those in overseas tourist attractions. Well, if tourists eat the food and suffer from diarrhea or any other diseases, then the boundary shopping city may be affected. So insofar as food hygiene, et cetera, is involved, I hope that you can identify a suitable site for that. I agree that if the system is not good enough, it will be counterproductive. So we need comprehensive collaboration among bureaus and departments so that well, actually, that is the only solution for this food truck proposal. Mr. Chan Kam Lam? Well, among the four major economic pillars, only the financial services sector and tourism are better. Our competitive edge in the other two industries is weakening. And we have a headache here with tourism. On the one hand, we have too many tourists. The Tourism Board and the Tourism Commission are doing publicity. But we cannot choose our guests. They come from all over the world. We want less mainland visitors, but if we have too few mainland visitors, the whole tourism industry will be affected. Mainland visitors are spending the most money within the spectrum of visitors. And there's no way for us to choose mainland visitors. Well, some of them are coming for daily necessities, so this is a headache. One point six three million visitors, averaging zero point nine trips, over fourteen million trips in total per year. No matter how you reduce that number, you won't be able to eradicate the phenomenon of a very, very busy living cycle in Hong Kong. We're now telling the CPG that something should be done for this multiple entry arrangement. So what is the direction for the government? Are you still going to observe this multiple entry arrangement? Will this be a solution?
Perhaps I should give the floor to Ms. Kathy Ju. Yes, we want to ensure sustained and healthy growth of our tourism industry. After all, it is one of our four pillar industries. And secondly, we would like to lessen the impact on uh people's daily lives as a result of the growth in the number of visitors. So we will enhance the capacity, receiving capacity of our tourism facilities. And we are now working very uh closely with um in uh with the Red Sun Party in setting up the border shopping center. And we'll also reveal the uh total capacity and also mix of our um to visitors. I think uh many Southeast Asian countries, including Japan and South Korea, envy Hong Kong. The question is, we are now at a plate, at a plateau. How can we boost our receiving capacity? And to improve the various uh byproducts or side effects of our tourism activities so that we can be a city of hospitality. If we just think about uh increasing or reducing the number of visitors, then this is not just a question of driving visitors away. It will also affect our international reputation and standing. So we hope the administration can do more.
Dr. Anna Zhang, page three of the secretary's speaking note. Uh last year, we received sixty point eight million dollars, up twelve percent compared with twenty thirteen. So the secretary uh should have told us very directly that the occupied movement, movement has not affected our tourism industry at all, given that the total number of visitors have increased. Now I'd like to ask a supplementary question on uh reply one four three. So we received sixty point eight million visitors. Fourteen million of them were IVS on multiple entry endorsements, accounting for twenty-four point four percent of the total number of visitors to Hong Kong. And uh one point six eight visit million were from uh Shenzhen. And offra- and average, they came to Hong Kong nine point one times per year. So I'd like to ask whether the administration has any plans? What is your target number of visitors for the coming few years? More or less and the targets? And what do you expect in terms of uh the mix of visitors we have? Will you tell the central authorities that we should amend the multiple entry endorsement policies to reduce the number of times Shenzhen citizens can visit Hong Kong? A present is nine point one. Would you lower that to six or five or seven? You talked about immigration policy of Shenzhen, all right? Shenzhen have their immigration, um have their own policy for their own citizens to leave Shenzhen. But we also have our own immigration policy of people to enter Hong Kong. Does that mean that uh if Shenzhen doesn't want to change its policy, we have no choice but to swallow uh this seventy million Shenzhen trips?
The tourism industry is an important pillar industry of Hong Kong and uh it also provides a lot of economic benefits to Hong Kong. So I do not focus on the conflicts, rather how we can uh maximize the potential of resources. I am pleased to say that the central authorities are willing to cooperate or to support uh the Hong Kong SL to see how uh they can help us to develop and we can also meet the needs of mainland visitors. Different stakeholders, uh we will analyze the views of different stakeholders and report their views to the central authorities and we'll see how the policy can be improved.
Uh because uh these uh this policy has accounted for uh two point seven million jobs in Hong Kong. So we have to uh take care of the rights views of these people and also have to uh balance the um various impacts on our daily lives. We have about seventy-two thousand or so hotel rooms. Uh two years afterwards, we will have uh eighty thousand or eighty-four thousand rooms. We have uh to develop various tourism attractions such as our theme parks so that we can boost our receiving capacity. My question for the secretary is, will you reduce the number of trips allowed under a multiple entry endorsement? We are now exploring with the central authorities. Mr. Tan Kapiu? I'm concerned about the tourism industry's outlook for the future. Now, now I'm not talk about the whole industry, but the tour guides and escorts. They are saying, how come there is nothing in the relief measures announced by the budget to benefit them? They are all for a travel agents, but not for tourist guides and escorts. And uh reply one five five, uh it said that you're going to submit a bill on uh the authority, uh the tourism authority, and that uh all tours, uh all tourist guides uh should have valid uh valid license. However, you do not require a travel agent to necessarily employ tour escorts and tour guides because for many outbound tours, they do not use local tour escorts at all. So uh many practitioners in this industry are finding it hard to uh survive. And now our TEs and TGs rely on tips to survive. But uh since the enactment of the competition ordinance, there is no more suggestion or recommended level of tips for TEs and TGs, leading to a lot of confusion. Do you know that while you emphasize uh the development of our tourism industry, no TEs and TGs like to stay in this trade?
Yes, uh regarding uh whether there should uh it should be compulsory for a tour to have a tour guide or tour escort. Well, I think we have discussed this a number of times in this council. And according to the industry, I, it should not be a mandatory requirement. Because if a group of friends organize themselves into a tour, they may not want a tour guide or tour escort to follow them. This uh will uh remove the flexibility and uh will also increase uh the cost of a tour. I think this is a consensus after discussion within the industry. Uh whether the relief measures will benefit TEs and TGs as well? For relief measures to help industries affected by the occupied movement, if these measures can benefit employers, I think the whole, all the industries will also benefit.
Secretary, you are saying uh to the uh travel agencies once again, you're entitled to not to have TEs and TGs so as to lower costs. While uh tourist agencies continue to collect tips uh from uh uh tourists, such tips may not go to TEs and TGs. And with the enactment of the competition ordinance, uh there is no scale of fees on TEs and TGs. So uh these people are not sure whether their jobs can be kept. So will you face up to uh So will you face up to the crisis faced by TGs and TEs? Do you want them to, leave them to survive or not? For outbound tours, well, if a group of friends form themselves into a tour, they can choose not to have a TE or TG. And the tourism, I mean, the competition ordinance doesn't just apply to this industry, but to all industries in Hong Kong. Reply two eight eight, or two two eight. Regarding assistance given by the ETOs to cultural exchange activities. According to your reply, the ETOs have helped some art groups in overseas performances. I'd like to know the form of subsidies, whether it's a financial subsidy or in other forms. And according to the reply, ETOs maintain very close liaison with local arts groups. I'd like to know, what do you mean by close liaison? Do you have any mechanism to ensure that such liaison exists and how does it operate? Secretary. Regarding such liaisons and subsidies, it can happen in many different ways and means. I will invite the director to answer. When Hong Kong cultural or arts groups go to a place, then the overseas ETO concerned may help to enhance the attractiveness of the performances. And if it can boost Hong Kong's image, it will cooperate with these groups. And when these groups visit, have overseas visits where possible, our overseas ETOs will help in terms of coordination and itinerary planning. Culture is a frequently mentioned topic in the daily work of overseas ETOs because this is conducive to promoting the overall image of Hong Kong. Mr. Ma Fengkong. So you talked about the government wanting these arts and cultural groups to do them a favor. I don't know whether you were talking about support, financial subsidy in their expenses. And the other level is when these groups want an overseas ETO to help. So will the overseas ETO just help in making connections or will financial subsidies be provided? Yes, some activities are organized by our overseas ETOs and culture and arts groups are invited to perform there. We also sponsor uttering arts programs, so it can be in different forms. The intention is to make use of different cultural activities such as movies, concerts, to promote Hong Kong's culture. And to promote direct exchange between Hong Kong groups and local groups. You talked about close liaison. Is there any mechanism? Will all such groups be informed? I think when necessary, our overseas ETOs will pass all message to, and will also keep in touch with as many groups as possible. And I also mentioned different types of activities and programs. Mr. Lan Kwok-hong, I'd like to follow up on Mr. James Tien's question. She, he sounded very righteous. And I think the issue is beyond the control of Mrs. Soh's population policy. I think these multiple entry endorsement visitors are part of our mobile population, not really tourists. All over the world, there is mobile population and we have to allow them to come in. You talked about a five percent contribution by the tourism industry to our GDP, employing two hundred and fifty thousand people. Using Mr. Michael Tien's logic, these people are not tourists, rather part of our mobile population. What can you do about this? CY Long's Innovation and Technology Bureau, it failed after trying for three years and yet it would still want to, to gatecrash, logical. So has he asked you to deal with this deformed tourism industry in Hong Kong? Have you ever addressed the situation? Because the structure of visitors to Hong Kong is very different. They are similar to mobile population, what are here therefore, probably not for sightseeing. So how do you address this problem? Well, I don't want to broaden this issue too much. For those who are in Hong Kong, no matter whether they are for sightseeing or for shopping, they are visitors. If we call them mobile population, and if you drag the IT bureau into the question, I think you have digressed too much. We are just thinking of diversifying our tourism industry so that we can serve visitors from different source countries. Lan Chuen, CY Long asked you to waste so much time in trying to establish IT bureau? And what about mobile, this mobile population squeezing us out when it comes to the use of public transport and our daily necessity? Now, I am going to move an amendment to cut your salary in filibustering, you know about that.
Mr. CY Long only told us, we have already stopped the entry of these pregnant women from delivering babies in Hong Kong. But we are now talking about five percent of our GDP. You know, I'm going to propose cutting your salary. Did he tell you to make sure the ITB could be established? I think this is for the next session. I've read all the questions already. Would you please come back at three forty PM and ask your question again? Well, CY Long cannot even manage his home well. So how can he manage Hong Kong? The IVS visitors are now flooding Hong Kong. Well, I think, Mr. Chairman, you're correct. Filibustering is really wasting everybody's time. Mr. Wu Chi Wei, thank you, Chairman. Just now, in the secretary's replies, he repeatedly said that tourism is important for us and we should try our best to increase the number of high-end visitors or value-added visitors. When we discuss tourism, we always refer to our experience. In the coming year, the Tourism Board will focus on mice as well as green tourism or eco-tourism. These two concepts will improve our tourism concepts. Otherwise, our visitors will continue shopping, shopping, shopping. It's just like the shopping experience of Shenzhen visitors under the multiple entry endorsement arrangement. This is very different from our experience in tourism or shopping on other fronts. So have you ever looked into these two different types of experience? And how will they impact on the long-term development of our tourism industry? Are there any measures to, apart from making us a mice capital and to develop eco-tourism? Given the conflicts mentioned by Mr. Lan Kwok-hong, that is, the adverse impact brought forth by a huge mobile population? Has the secretary looked into that experience? Which question or reply are you referring to? Oh, no, you're not referring to any specific question or answer. Secretary, well, different tourists have different needs. For mice, the Tourism Board has gone out of his way to do more to attract more conferences to Hong Kong. Maybe in a moment, I'll defer to Mr. Lau. As for the boundary shopping center, we would like to have it. We would like to have more hotel rooms. For tourist attractions, we will develop our theme parks. We've spent no effort to adopt a multi-pronged development approach. Then we have to take care of parallel trading activities as well as anti-parallel trading activities. We would like to develop our tourism infrastructure better. Well, I defer to Mr. Lau. The Tourism Board has done a lot in terms of mice. Mr. Antoni Lau, to attract high-end visitors, this year, the Tourism Board will continue to attract more visitors who stay overnight because they will benefit many trades and industries. So our overall budget, of our overall budget, seventy six percent will be on the international market. Well, understand that. Chairman. Any solutions to tackle the problem of these IVS visitors coming only for shopping under the multiple entry endorsement arrangement? Well, it's precisely because of this that we're talking about the tourism infrastructure. Mr. Gary Fan. Well, in, in reply zero seven zero, the secretary's reply is lopsided. Ninety percent of the multiple entry endorsement visitors only come once a day. But he does not mention that many Shenzhen visitors have been visiting Hong Kong for over a hundred times per year. That means many of them may be involved in parallel trading activities that's causing nuisance to Hong Kong. Does it mean that we won't cap the number of inbound visitors by working on the IVS, be it single entry or multi-entry endorsements? Around ten thousand visitors entered Hong Kong for, say, around twenty trips per year. And if the government does not admit such figures, can we be given some accurate figure? And last week, the CEO came for his question and answer time. In two days' time, CY Long said that a government has submitted a report to the CPG on smuggling activities and parallel trading activities. Why is it that a report could be completed in a day's time and the CEO failed to disclose the answer during the Q and A session? Secretary, was there a report? Can the report be made public, Secretary? As far as the report is concerned, it reflects the views of the stakeholders in the past. Can you make public the report? If not, why not? Well, this is a report to the CPG, it's not appropriate to make it public. In 2013, Secretary, you compiled a report on the capability of Hong Kong to cope with the number of visitors. Well, why can't you make public that report? Why have you swept it under the carpet? Well, given Mr. Fan's attitude. Why is it that on the twenty third of March, the Macau CEO said that he could submit an enhancement report to the CPG and in immediacy on the twenty eighth, the secretary said that a report had been submitted? Why can't you make public that report? Overall speaking, reports on our coping capacity, well, we've actually passed the information to members in the past. Well, Secretary, can you make public the report? Well, he is trying to have a debate with me. Well, I'd like the secretary to answer that question. Chairman, I've repeatedly answered that in the past, different stakeholders have given different views and suggestions. And how will that impact on us in the long term? In 2014, many of these visitors entered Hong Kong many, many times. Can we have the details? Secretary, were those figures correct? What figures? Well, Secretary, you didn't even listen to my question. Well, it's because you were continuously speaking. It's very difficult for him to hear your questions. Ms. Claudia Mo, Mr. Yu Si-wing. I'd like to ask about C A D B, CIT, reply two nine. Concerning the promotion cost, eighty million dollars had been given for that. Together with the retail industry and the catering industry, promotion arrangements are to be made. For short-term promotion, twenty million dollars. Well, how can the industries play their role? Two point five million dollars. Is it for the tourism board to go to different jurisdictions for marketing? We have one thousand seven hundred odd travel agencies in Hong Kong. They have their respective networks. In the past, each travel agency focused on a few jurisdictions. Will more resources be allocated to support SMEs or small and medium travel agencies in promoting Hong Kong? In particular, when these small and medium travel agencies have innovative ideas to increase the number of visitors to Hong Kong, will the government adopt a more open attitude in receiving these counter suggestions? Well, these suggestions are to pool travel agencies together to form a larger front to promote Hong Kong. May I defer to Mr. Lau, the executive director of the Tourism Board? Mr. Antoni Lau. Well, there are two aspects here. Number one, how to support the industry in promoting Hong Kong overseas? Of the eighty million dollars, two point five million dollars are for enhancing our efforts in 2015, sixteen, under the budget. Almost ten million dollars are for supporting our travel agencies in promoting Hong Kong in overseas jurisdictions. You can find the details in the budget. We encourage local travel agencies to start innovative tours. We have a new product design scheme under the 2015, sixteen budget. Around four million dollars have been allocated for that. If necessary, that can be increased. That can, that's for local travel agencies for innovative ideas in tours. Let me follow up. If a travel agency has good suggestions, can you subsidize the traveling expenses and accommodation expenses? Mr. Antoni Lau? Thank you, Chairman, thank you. Thank you, member. We believe that the present subvention level is enough. As for traveling expenses and accommodation, we can continue to discuss with the tourism industry. I'd like to ask about the cruise terminal. One poor, $13.2 million have been earmarked for that. The role of the cruise terminal is enhancing for the next financial year. Next, Miss Claudia Mo. Thank you, Chairman. Concerning the I V S, I think we're mainly concerned about too many visitors. Well, $40 million will be spent on publicity, publicizing Hong Kong as a place of fun. Well, please do not continue with that trend. I'd like to ask about reply one one nine and those ensuring replies. Many political parties have repeatedly asked you to clarify the difference between tourists and parallel traders, not even C Y Leng knew the difference. We always say that we would like to limit the number of I V S visitors, but in fact, we're targeting parallel traders. This has something to do with the serious lack of confidence in mainland products. Well, either you collect a land levy for inbound tourists for the airport departure tax, you immediately adopted it. So how will you treat the views of the political parties?
And is it really possible to scrap multiple entry endorsement policy? Secretary, in my reply to the motion debate last week, I said that for the time being, we will not consider a land arrival or departure tax. Why not? Because if we introduce such a policy, there, we will have to consider the overall impact on our economy and also other implications. We have to consider these carefully before we introduce a new measure. Should we scrap the multiple entry endorsement policy? We don't propose to scrap it in one go, but we should see how we can minimize or reduce the impact on people's daily lives in Hong Kong, with to ensure the healthy development of our tourism industry. So what the issues under study, can you tell us the preliminary idea? Secretary.
Well, generally speaking, the issues we explore, we have to explore, we include the visitor mix, the structure, the demand and to match our capacity so that we can give better, we can maximize our potential better. For instance, we understand the nuisance created to our residents, so we may consider having border shopping area and diverting some of the tourists and we have to adjust the structure of our tourism industry, we will have to discuss with the central authorities. However, the secretary has been talking about these quite a few years, so up to now, you don't have any practicable proposal. Well, as I said, this is a major development and we have been increasing our receiving capacity all along. All right, we will rest until 3:40.